All right, we'll call the meeting in order, so welcome everybody to the February 10th, 2020 study session. You can call the world, please.
Deputy Mayor Decorsy.
Here.
Councilmember Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Giraj.
Here.
Councilmember Malinga.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Excuse.
Councilmember Trout Manuel.
Here.
All right, thank you. Any announcements, reports, or presentations? All right, we will move into our agenda items. So first on the agenda, item 3A, City Organizational Overview, Parks, Arts and Recreation, Director Faber.
Yes.
Is he putting fish in your ponds over there?
We had the privilege of building so many ponds this last rainstorm. No cost to the city budget.
I saw that email.
We were water hazards at the golf course, so for those of you who play, um...
Get my fire fishing rig out.
We're in there frequently, we'll be in there more frequently.
We'll be collecting lots of...
More opportunity.
Anyhow, um...
It's beautiful though.
Yeah, so for the record, I'm Daryl Faber, the Director of Parks, Arts and Recreation, and I'm happy to be here tonight to have a brief organizational overview of our department and some of the things that we consider when we're making decisions and where we're going and some of the budget impacts as well. So, um, it's a great audience because all of you have been users of our system and a park board member and Robin being involved for years and the rest of you all participating in our program. So, I'm kind of speaking to the informed and that's kind of what Parks does. So, um, then to get started, our department is kind of divided into nine areas and we'll walk briefly through them. Um, but Parks Planning and Development, Senior Center, Cemetery, Arts and Events, Recreation, Maintenance, Golf Course, and the Museum. And, um, there's 53 full-time employees. I've been the privilege of being the director long enough that kids that went to the daddy-daughter date night now have kids that are at the daddy-daughter date night. And kids at breakfast with Santa now bring their kids to breakfast with Santa. So I've been doing this in the city about 19 years and had the privilege of adopting a very good system. And also, um, we have a great system in place in Parks and Recreation. I appreciate the council's support over the years and the community's support. When I came, I think there were 41,000 residents and there's 81,000 now. And we've been able to maintain a really spectacular Parks, Arts and Recreation system over the years. Oops, somebody go backwards one. So when we spoke of those divisions, now that I am getting a little older, I better put some glasses on. The division, you can see in that pie and also the expenditures, if you look across that line, it adds up to about $12.5 million in what it costs our city to deliver those services. And about 50% of that is our salaries and benefits for the employees that do it, the 51 employees. When I came to the city, I think there were 49. Since that time, we've internalized the golf course, we've added a theater, we've added a community center and a teen center, and we've added some parks. So, we are lean and mean, and we were pretty lean then, but, um, we've learned how to do things differently, making some great decisions like buying bigger lawn mowers so you have less manpower, computerizing irrigation systems so you're not out there doing it yourself, and woman power, person power. We have everybody in our department, um, getting boots on the ground. And then also the interfund, that second group is about 25% of our budget, and that pays for our IT division, our facilities division. And then about 25% is those lines in the middle. That's the paper supplies and the office supplies and the professional services. So when we look at growing the department or decreasing the budget, what becomes available is really the 25%. And a lot of those are related to the revenues that we produce in summer camp. If we don't have the supplies to operate a summer camp, we can't create the revenues that we'll talk about a little bit later. And our revenues is about, um, about $3 million, $3.6 million in the department. And so, in our division, we're one of the only ones in the city that there's things that make money and things that cost money and we can control a percent of it. Power of Parks is what I think is important in every community. I don't know of any great cities that don't have great parks. Whether you're talking about Bend, Oregon and its open space, or New York City, or Boston, all great cities have great parks and we're privileged with that as well. And there's a lot of benefits to parks that even the non-users get, whether it's fresh air and oxygen. I always, um, when you do a scale of what people value in their parks, it's oftentimes it's trails. And I say, "Well, even if you're driving by a park and somebody else is exercising, you feel good." So, um, that's one of the things that's super popular, as well as the safety net that they provide in our community. Um, we have a great relationship with our police department as well and also with our economic development. When you build your house next to a park or you buy a house next to your park, it has more value than ones that are farther away from parks because people want to live next to, um, open space or active space. A little bit about our programming, we kind of have a triangle of how we explain to our staff what we're doing. In the red is the core services, things that you expect in every town. You have parks and open space. If you have a senior center, it wouldn't make any sense to lock the door, so you run programs there. Same with like our rec teen center. There's no reason to develop it if you don't mow it or take care of it. In the middle is what we spend a lot of our time doing. That's our, um, programs that we call import, they're all important, but important programs. And they're a mix of fees and taxes. So if you're playing in a youth soccer league, you're paying maybe $30 and the tax base is probably picking up another $15 or $20 on that. So it's a subsidized activity if you're a child. If you're an adult sports league, you're paying the whole way, they're not subsidized. So we do a lot of those things that are a mix of a small fee, you'll see in our recreation brochure, our senior center brochure, and then, and some of that is then subsidized. And then at the top, the green area is an area that we've really grown in because it helps pay for the other area. And those are the activities such as weddings and birthday parties, private rentals, trips and tours. The only person paying for that is the benefactor, yourself. So those aren't subsidized at all. So we've really been working at growing those areas, such things as the synthetic fields at Game Farm Park. Um, that's a great revenue source for us, the new field at Brandon Park, those type of things. The only person benefiting would be the one out there if it's a private rental, so those have a higher fee ratio. Core service, I kind of briefly went over that. A lot of these are mandated by law. You have to have so much open space in your community and they're essential to protecting our public health. We have a lot of those open spaces as well, such as the golf course, and then you have the area on the hill above the golf course, another 100 acres, that's providing oxygen and, um, and the like there. And it's also the things that just regular businesses in any town would expect to see in your community. They expect to see kids' sports leagues. It's just part of what a community is, how you offer those things, whether it's yourself or through a little league can be debated, or through a youth soccer association. In Auburn, we have great programs that are by nonprofits and great programs ourself and we have a great relationship and all of that. The fee-supported ones, they enhance and support all of our core services broadly utilized. Our participation is really high compared to a lot of cities. When our brochure goes out or electronically, the participation level is extremely high here. And I think that's because of the ongoing philosophy of the city of how we cost our activities. They're very affordable. Um, breakfast with Santa that we offer is like eight or $10 in a lot of communities, those are like $25 or $30 because we've just had the philosophy, we're trying to get everybody to participate. And I always tell Steph, I'd rather have 100 people at $1 than one person at $100 because the goal is to get participation in our programs. These added value ones is what we've probably added the most of lately, our private birthday parties. I think we've maybe did, I don't even know, probably 300 of them last year, whether it's on the climbing wall or in the gym. We make a lot of money doing private birthday parties because a lot of parents don't want to do any of it and they know they can come to a safe, clean environment and participate in that as well. That's how our, our budget is divided up. About 25% is in our Parks Division, and a little later we'll talk about what, what they're overseeing and doing. And then we have our Arts Division, Theater, Events, Recreation, Senior Center, Museum and Farm, Parks and Golf Course. Our expenditures were about 12.5 million last year and our revenue is about 3.6. It ends up costing each citizen of Auburn about $9 a month for all of our services, if you actually divide it out. So it's about a $9 a month per person for all the things that, that we do. So in our admin, that's basically myself and Jamie Kelly, who many of you know, he's our park planner. He's also, does a lot of things with the homeless issue in our community, working with police and others on that. And then there's one admin who serves our entire department, Julie Mel, and she's been with us quite a while as well. And there's six advisory boards, that takes up a lot of time and it's a great group. We lost one of our great advisory members. James came over to this side, which is good. It's good to have a supporter of what we do on city council. So Cemetery Board, Senior Advisory Board, the White River Museum, Arts Commission and Park Board and Tree Board. The Cemetery Board is a separate enterprise, so we'll talk about them in a little while. And our park planner is just the one FTE. He does a lot of grant writing beyond Boots on the Ground projects, basically under about a million dollars. We manage ourselves. Ones larger than that, we work with Ingrid and her group when we're doing something really large, like when we built the community center or the 8th Street Cut Through that went between Nexus and the White River, and the museum. So if it's a larger project, we just send it over to Public Works after we get through design. And if it's a smaller one, we manage it ourselves. And Jamie does a lot of that, as well as grant writing to RCO, the State Recreation Conservation Office, our other grants, a lot to King County and nonprofits. So we've been super successful in getting other people's money to help build our programs. The arts is one area that Auburn, I think, should be really proud of. It's had a great arts commission for years and it's an area that we've grown in a lot. Recently, as you know, we just purchased the Auburn Ave Theater to go on above our regular visual art program. And we pack a lot of tribute bands in there and other events. This last weekend, we had a Bravo event with John Denver, Ted Vigil. He was at the Performing Arts Center. We have a good relationship with the school district. I think 750 tickets were sold to that show. So, um, we've done really well in theater. And that division also oversees our community's major special events. So Veterans Day Parade, Pet Palooza, Kids' Day, Fourth of July, all of the things that attract Auburn residents and also people from the outside comes out of this division and as well as the smaller summer concert series and movies in the park. So, um, a great group of employees, um, doing really good stuff. Julie Krueger heads this group up and they're always looking for ideas and I'm just super proud of, of that division. One of the things we've been working on, as you guys are aware, is kind of an arts trifecta. So now that we have the Arts and Culture Center, which is the old original Auburn Post Office and next to it the Auburn Library, and in the middle is an Auburn Alleyway that we worked with the livable cities of University of Washington on. We're doing a transformation of those three, two buildings and one alleyway and continue to seek funding for that. The alleyway will be done probably by midsummer. The architect is basically done and we've got an artist on board who's working with the muckle shoot on some, some of the project in there. And we've gotten a little over a million dollars for the Arts and Culture Center and they're doing design drawings on that right now as well for the top floor of the old Auburn Post Office. And it's going to be a great downtown venue for both really fun events, up to like 100 people, as well as art classes and artists in residence or working artists, they wouldn't be in residence there, but they'd actually be doing something there for a couple of months at a time. We're beginning the plan on the theater. We had two older plans done. We'll be looking at how best to retrofit it or what to do with it over these next six to 12 months and get kind of an action plan on that. And we've already reached out to other electeds, both at the county and the federal level and the state, on trying to find some money to actually keep that vibrant in downtown. It does really well in spite of its condition. There's a lot of shows that are really popular in there. Just as important as the show, what we've done with our youth and teens in there is really important. And, um, those shows sell out because their parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles come and next thing you know, you got a two-week run with sold-out houses. Our recreation programs, that's what's been around probably the longest forever. Everybody's signed up for Auburn Parks and Rec and got the T-shirt and played whatever sport it is and that continues to go on. We also program a lot of adult sports, but a lot of associations are doing that now. We used to run a lot of basketball, softball and soccer ourselves. We're pretty much a field provider for organizations that do that now. We do some ourselves, but not as many as we did 10, 15 years ago. There's just outside leagues. There's a Hispanic Soccer League that rents our fields. There's an adult softball, baseball league that rents our fields. So they contact us and they do the work. And that's one of the ways we've been able to keep our programming numbers down while keeping our revenues up. With kids, we still do most of the activities ourselves. And then we have a huge special recreation program that Jamie Warner's put on for years and really active, and it's, um, all ages of people with special needs, whether it's just learning how to go out to dinner or having a fun activity or being involved in special activity and Special Olympics, really involved. And our camp program has grown. We had over 2,000 registrants this past summer for our summer camps. And, um, we've done a mix and match there that's gotten really, really popular. Where half the day you can go to maybe a history camp and then in the afternoon you can attend maybe a sports camp. And that's been super popular with the parents who want their kids to have lots of opportunity and not get bored and they don't want to entertain them for 12 weeks in the summer. Well, our big, um, big addition at the, when we built the community center was we took what was our admin building, which before that was the original Auburn Senior Center, and turned it into the rec teen center. And if you have a chance to go there any day between 2:30 and 5 o'clock, you will see Inclusive Auburn. It is the neatest thing to see and we have, um, we didn't add any FTEs when we opened it. We've added some part-time employees that have been with us and moved to, one of our employees now does teens and fitness. And that center is so exciting, it's just a dollar to go and that hasn't been a barrier. And if it is a barrier, we make sure that that kid goes too, but that way the kids have a little skin in the game and we do. And we've had, um, great success with everything from the maker space to healthy eating to sports in the gym. Right before I came over here today, I walked over there, there were probably 70 kids participating and two school buses lined up. One of the keys to making that program work is our relationship with the school district, where they drop the kids off at 2:30 and pick them up again at about 5:00. And this, a lot of kids just don't have transportation or it's already dark. And that free bus program has made the program super successful, along with the programs that, their kids feel safe, they can get help with their homework, they can learn how to use a laser cutter, they can play, um, games, they can get on computers for homework help. So it's been a great program. And we've expanded into our outdoor pursuits with that group. We got a grant two years ago from the state for expanding our outdoor pursuit program. And then we worked with King County and the Auburn Rotary and we got the van wrapped. So you see our cool van and trailer cruising around town. And we've added snowshoes to our mountain bikes and now the seniors are taking it out. So, um, you're never too old to get outdoors. And, um, it's just been a great growth area. There's some fun pictures there and, um, we've combined, I think we have about 26 mountain bikes now and there's a lot of weekends where they are, they are gone somewhere. And we're looking at adding a small, um, a small trail at either Cedar Lanes Park or one of our other parks so that kids can learn how to do it locally and then go out on a bigger trail. Our senior center, um, it's so fun to go in there. It's two generations of seniors, our 60-year-olds and 90-year-olds, and somehow they all mostly get along. And Ray Dean Lozier has been managing that program for quite a few years. And, um, there's four and a half FTEs there. And, um, I know you guys go to your coffee hours there in the morning and the crowd kind of changes during the day, but it's also become such a great place for people from all nationalities. And the lunches change based, you know, some days there's tacos and the next time there's, um, you know, a pot pie or whatever. It's just a great place and karaoke and Wii bowling. It's not what I would call the boring senior center that my parents had to endure up in Mount Vernon. They actually came and visited this and were shocked that people were actually playing pickleball and going on trips and hiking up Boo Boo Point.
Yeah.
So, um, it's a great space and we're really happy to have it. And that group's done a lot of work. At the end, well, this is a new program that we just got a grant for, um, one and a half million dollars and that's for the new program coming up for a resource navigator that'll both work at our senior center, go out in the community to people who might be shut-in so get them the right resources to navigate what can be really confusing, whether it's Medicaid, Medicare, um, medical issues, taxes, leaky water, um, tank, whatever it is. So we'll be working with this person who we're hiring right now for the next four years through King County levy dollars and also coordinating with Elgona Pacific and Incorporated Federal Way with a second person. We're the hub and we're outsourcing the other services for outside of the same city limits. So it's going to be a great program, something that's really needed because Ray Dean at the center and her coworkers spend a lot of time doing social work and resource navigation. And now we'll actually be able to get them back to running the senior center and having somebody who can help with something that's super complicated. It's complicated when, with your 30 to 60, it's really complicated when you're 70 to 100 and you're shut-in in your house and you don't have anybody around. So I'm really excited about that new addition. Our museum is a great example of a cooperative partnership that began, I think maybe 30 years ago and then added the farm about 20 years ago. It's probably more than 30, I'm going to date myself. But the White River Valley Museum also has an advisory board. They have a separate 501(c)(3) that the revenues for their programs go into. The city provides two FTEs as well as additional support and a great relationship between the museum and the city, as well as great outreach with the school district on the salmon to stream programs and where does your food come from? And if you have a chance to go out to the Mary Olsen Farm this coming summer, don't go there right now, it's underwater.
[laughter]
It's a great place. I'd, I'd recommend during the Hops and Crops Festival, would be the best date to go. And so they do a lot of fundraising as well as being a great resource for the city, the mayor's office, for Caitlin, what she's doing, Caitlin, what she's doing in article. They have every magazine, newspaper in the history of Auburn, as well as the stories as to how Auburn got from 1890 to 2020. And, um, they're a great resource for us to have in our community. Parks Maintenance, obviously our largest division, 16 full-time employees and there's probably in the summer, I'd say there's about 15 additional part-time employees that can bet our seasonals. 390 acres of open space and about 300 acres of developed space. There's 33 developed parks, those would be the ones that we mow, blow and go and line and drag and do all those type of things on. And then there's a few others that are, um, that are just large open spaces that our department maintains. A lot of them, we just walk the trails once a month just to make sure that encampments haven't gone in there. There's an area above Game Farm Park, there's an area above the Olsen Farm and the golf course, and some larger properties that are basically just set aside in open space that we don't program, but we keep our eyes on. We have 191 community garden plots and those sell out right away. There's some over by Trotters, about 100, and then some by Auburn School District's admin building. And those are our great community building spaces as well. You see, um, their best event at the end of the year, they usually do a potluck and it's every nationality's favorite dish. They can't really speak to each other, but they can all eat together. And, um, it's, it's a fine potluck come September. 30 playgrounds, 18 ballfields, basketball, pickleball courts, horseshoe tennis, bocce, soccer, skate parks, mod soccer fields, off-leash, disc golf, um, all the traditional things you'd see in a city of our size. One of the other things we do is we maintain all of the right-of-way landscape areas that, that are planted and intentionally growing. So we maintain those, as well as the beautification areas and the downtown flower basket program. So you'll see our guys out there fertilizing those. We have our own nursery out at the GSA site where we, um, work with the Auburn Garden Club and plant a lot of those plants from starters and then grow them before they get transferred into the baskets. Saves a lot of money and builds a lot of camaraderie. And, um, so the flower basket program's been a big hit and they're always just beautiful on Main Street and the side streets as well. And a lot of the roundabouts and other things like that, that are, if they're intentionally planted out, then our crew maintains those. And we contract out a few of the right-of-ways that are a little more dangerous or require, um, flagging, et cetera, like Lake Taps Parkway, 15th Street. So those ones we contract out with an outside firm, but 95% of them we maintain ourselves. The golf course is also in our, in our Parks Division and 18 holes on 387 acres, of which the course uses about half of that. The rest is the hillside, the open space above it, but it's actually a parcel line with the golf course. We get about 45,000 rounds a year. Lots of specialty events fundraisers for various causes. We're the home to four high school golf teams. They all play there at no fee, which is a great benefit to the school district and also helps grow the game of golf. And our ladies club and men's club, we have over 700 members now, um, which is a large men's club, ladies club. The men's is almost 600, the ladies is a little over 150. And that's your consistent golfers that come almost every week regardless of weather. So that's really important to grow that. That's what's separating us from a lot of the other municipal golf courses is what's happening.
Regardless of weather, it makes me feel more, a little better about myself.
Yeah, this weather is, alright, in case you see the January, February revenue report from the golf course, it will not be good. Just letting you know, we had one golfer this weekend.
Yeah, I saw him out there golfing.
Yeah, we got $12 in the till. It was a great week. But the shoulder months are when you have to do good in April and October, summer takes care of itself. We recently, um, received the award for being Golf Digest, one of the top 20 golf courses in the state of Washington by Golf Advisor.
Very good.
And, um, that we're the only pure municipal course on the list. And, um, it doesn't mean you're one of the best 20 courses in the state, but when you take cost, value, quality of course, customer service, all the things that Golf Advisor rates, uh, we are on the top 20 list. We're really excited about that. And as you can see with the new logo on the bottom of the page here, we will be this summer in June celebrating 50th year as a municipal golf course. The city took over the course and added nine holes right around 1970 and, um, we're really excited about that. Cascade Golfer Magazine interviewed me today and they're doing a story in their magazine about it. And we've done some amazing improvements out there and we have a great relationship with Bogies, um, which is part of Longhorn on the restaurant as well. There was a recent study done by the city of Everett that compares cities of kind of common size with how many parks and spaces and FTEs. I found this pretty interesting. Our number of parks and how many FTEs we have and acres, you can see there in the green and our undeveloped acres. But when you go down to cost to maintain, we're at 10,000 and these other cities are closer to 13 and 17. We're proud of the crew that we have. They are out there, rain or shine, community event or not, they're just a hard-working group of, of men and women. And, um, if you look at this and our population of 81,000, you can see that we're getting really great value for the work that's out there. And, um, I think we've done it the right way by maintaining the crew in-house. They're members of, um, the Teamsters Union and they, they're, they're proud of that, but what they're really proud of is being out there every day and they never complain. When we brainstorm about adding another event, in some cities, all they would see is, "Oh no, that's one more thing we have to do." They're actually excited to be out there at Pet Palooza and providing a service to the citizens. So it's, it's great to have them. And I think the numbers speak for themselves as far as, um, how frugal we are in, in those things. We have two great park projects coming up in the horizon. The first one is 104th Street. That's when, after you turn left to go out towards the golf course where the Tire Swing used to be, Beer Bottle Beach Park, yada, yada. And we're in design drawing and permitting on that right now. We got a grant from the state for half a million dollars last year that we're implementing and we've been working with Public Works on, um, some design issues and sewer hookup issues and water, et cetera. So we'll be probably under construction if permitting goes well late this year, early next year on that one. And the other project we're writing grants for right now is the Jacobson Tree Farm Park. That's up on the hill by Auburn Mountain View High School, um, between the, um, Jacobson Elementary and the power lines. We have, um, 40 acres there, um, that we're working on a phase one master plan and some grant writing. It was, the master plan was done in three phases about 10 years ago and it's been shelved. And, um, now that we have quite a few park impact fees built up in the coffers and some grants coming around through the state, we'll be looking at doing a phase one, which may not be the same phase that was originally intended 10 years ago. I think the needs have changed a little bit. But the Lee Hill area with 10,000 or 15,000 residents really need a legitimate community park. And this is the site that'll, that'll do that for the next generation up there. Our cemetery, um, it's run as an enterprise. It's basically a business upon itself. Craig Hudson's been up there, I think, a little over 10 years managing that. Arnie Galley was there a long time before that. And we do about 270 internments a year. And, um, we've added quite a bit of acreage. We're good for about the next 70 years up there at the current mortality rate. And this coming year, we're going to be overlaying all of the roads in there. They haven't been done and they're getting really messed up. We use funds from our endowed care and other sources for that. There's no general fund or capital city funds used for that. And we'll also be, um, building a 96 crypt mausoleum down where the current mausoleum And we'll also be building a ninety-six crypt mausoleum down where the current mausoleum is. It's been sold out for a couple of years, and a lot of people weren't using a mausoleum. They were either in the regular dish or a ground burial. But a design was done years ago that we're kind of redoing, and there's space down there. And that's also paid for out of existing reserves that we have in the cemetery. And I think it's really great that there's about a hundred municipal cemeteries in the state. Most of them are very, very small. Ours is the largest, I think. And they do a great job up there, and it's about a one point five million dollar operation, about one point three in expenditure. So we net about two hundred thousand a year plus endowed care. Lots of chances to get involved, and it was great to see a Boy Scout here tonight. We rely on a lot of those. And everything from adopt a park to volunteering to be coaches, mentors, lots of advisory boards. And obviously, I'm still smiling after all these years. I think this is maybe eighteen or nineteen, but it's been a great run. I urge any of you, if you ever want to tour any of our facilities, to give me a call. I'd be happy to show them off or just drop in. That'd be great as well. The last thing I'm gonna end with is we've been doing this inclusive Auburn thing, and we had a Y statement, and it was identify and remove the barriers for each and every person to pursue what they enjoy in safe places with people they love. This, when I read that, was like the mission of what we do in our department, is provide safe places for people, do things for people you love. And we've got a great system. Thank you guys for your support. I know you know what we do, and I'm always open to questions.
Questions, council member, town mayor.
I just have a comment. Every time we go to Coffee Hour at the senior center, we always come up with some new people there, and they're not from Auburn. They have come over because they've heard of all the programs that we've got going on. And then Raylene was there a couple of times, and some of these people wanted some services. So it was nice that Raylene was there because she took care of it. And that's when we learned about they were looking for grants to hire somebody to take care of these needs that some of these elderly people are needing.
That'll be a big benefit of the Resource Navigator because your need doesn't stop at a city boundary. Your need is still there.
Which I thought was really good because, you know, we took care of that woman. And it was really nice to hear every time we go there, somebody new.
Yeah, it's not getting smaller.
Yeah.
And our population's aging. Any other questions?
Just, it was really great to hear the recognition of the golf course. We play out there, and it's probably about ninety percent our regular course. We do venture out on occasion on the courses, but there's not another course, Bob, I think you'll agree, another course that we played on throughout the region that is as well taken care and is as professional as our golf course. I mean, if you brought people in and said, this is a municipal course, and we think it's a private club, it's that good. So it's really, congratulations to you and the staff out there for keeping that up and doing a tremendous job. And we have decided that we're no longer going to pound tees in the ground in the wintertime when the ground is frozen, so we won't be doing that anymore. But as soon as the ground slightly thaws up, we'll be out there.
Well, I have a rule. If my wipers get past intermittent, I don't play.
That's it. Councilmember, town mayor.
Okay, I did have another question. You know the mediums are down going Auburn Way South, right by the car wash, McDonald's and all that? What are we gonna plant there? I noticed you've taken everything out.
Yeah.
And a little further, are those all gonna be replanted with?
It's gonna get replanted. We have to work with Public Works. There were some site visibility issues with how those plants had grown up, so they were removed, and so we'll revisit. There is irrigation in there. It hasn't been determined exactly what yet, but it will get replanted. It's ugly now.
Yeah. But it's, but now people, because I know I had several businesses call me and ask about that because of this.
Yeah, there, when you're going southbound, there's a regulation of how far before that left turn lane you have to be able to see, and things had grown too high.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Darrell.
You bet.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the Burke presentation with Director Thomas.
I'm here to introduce Allegra and Sheri tonight. Back in July, some of you may remember that we had entered into a contract with Burke Consulting. The scope of their services was to look at our general fund fiscal sustainability model, do some benchmarking analysis, as well as come up with some fiscal strategies as we go into our twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two budget year. And they've been working really hard these last several months, looking at our model, developing their own model, building assumptions, looking at what other cities are doing, and have come up with some really good ideas and recommendations for the council to consider. That their work included meeting with staff, the directors, the mayor, as well as some of the council members as well, to get ideas as far as what we see as valuable to the city of Auburn and where we see the city long-term. So tonight's presentation is a culmination of all of the work they've been doing for the last six months or so. And I hope that you find it, not entertaining, but informative. Entertaining, too. And I just want to remind you, this is, we will be spending plenty of time in the next coming months as we're going into the budget to go into more detail. And they'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have at the end of their presentation. And then Kevin and I will also help answer any questions that they're not able to answer. And we will definitely have opportunities to talk more in depth about some of the things that they bring up tonight. So if you do think of things after the presentation tonight, please take note and write them down and can talk about them more. But with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Allegra and Sheri.
Great, thank you.
So would you prefer that we wait until you finish your presentation to ask questions, or should we ask questions during the presentation?
I think it would be preferable at the end. If there's just a quick clarifying thing, we can stop, but certainly go back to any slides.
Okay.
That'd be, thank you for asking.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having us. I'm Allegra Calder, our principal at Burke Consulting, and I'm here with Sheri. I'm gonna lead us off and then pass it over. We're very excited to be here. It was a tough act to follow. I think that was, in fact, sort of entertaining and feel-good, and we'll do our best, but it is different, different subject matter. As Jamie mentioned, our presentation is gonna provide you with an overview of the city's financial situation, and it really complements, I think, the presentation that she's already made to you and kind of reinforces it. And it's the sort of material that signs you have to go over several times. You'll see we have a lot of material, and as Jamie mentioned, you'll have an opportunity to engage with it again. As Jamie mentioned, we had, you know, in addition to the financial model, we were able to speak to directors and some of the council members as well, and that was really helpful to get some of the contacts. But we certainly could not have done our work without the help of Jamie, Kevin, and Bob, and they were hugely helpful to our work. So we're really grateful to staff for that help. So in terms of our presentation, I'm gonna go quickly over sort of city services and funding structure and provide a little bit of information on benchmarking. And then I'm gonna pass it over to Sheri to talk about the fiscal condition and some of the fiscal strategies that we looked at. Right. You all live in Auburn, so I'm not gonna spend a lot of time telling you about your city. But what was important for our work was understanding the population and also the employment and then the mix of businesses. Because as we'll start to talk about a possible B and O tax, the mix of businesses does become really important. I think what's important to take away here is that, you know, Darrell mentioned in his presentation, the tremendous growth. And like a lot of other cities in King County, past this last recession, you have had a lot of growth. So that's important. That means increased demand on services as well. The other thing that I think's important to consider, we're gonna talk about what does it mean to be a full-service city? And that really is around the expectations of your residents and your businesses. And there's a lot of overlap between those two groups, but there are some important, some important differences there. You know, businesses care about having access to labor, they want the infrastructure, whether that's the roads or the broadband, and they want a sort of a facilitative supportive environment that when they need a permit or they, you know, want to understand the zoning context, they can kind of get what they need done. Residents obviously care about infrastructure, too, but I think they care a lot more about the services you just heard, which is the programming, it's the parks, it's the recreation, it's the ways in which, you know, they get to sort of enjoy and spend their lives in the community. And so those, those types of services become really important. But both of them also care a lot about the city's responsiveness to things like public safety, to homelessness, civility, that sort of thing. That's a concern for all of them. So when we talk about the full-service city model, this is a model that a lot of larger cities take. And it, and really, it just means that in most cases, you're providing those services directly in the same way that, again, we just, you know, had a parks presentation where you're the service provider, rather than contracting out with either other municipalities or other organizations to provide those, those services. And there's some benefits to this. I think for residents, the city is sort of your, it's the first point of contact that they think about when they have a problem or they have a question. You know, I hear from a lot of cities that you just get sort of calls into City Hall. So in terms of the way that they kind of view the world, the city as service provider makes a lot of sense. I'd say businesses are sort of agnostic. They just want to make sure that it's working for them. But as the government, I think, it does give you greater control over both sort of the quantity and quality of those services. It gives you some flexibility in terms of staffing, and it really allows you to be in alignment with your community's values and desires. So the things that your community really cares about, as the direct service provider, you're not negotiating with other municipalities to decide, are we gonna kind of, you know, do more of something and less of another? That's within your control. So that's a big reason why people like that, that option. But as we'll see in a minute, there are a few things that the city does contract out and that makes sense to contract out. So the blue are the exceptions. So when it comes to criminal justice, there's a contract with King County for the district court, and your owner cities at the regional jail facility score, and also with Valley Communication Center. And then fire is a fire authority, and the library is as part of the King County library system. But aside from that, when we talk about service delivery and, you know, what's funded, there's a lot of services that you're providing directly. So with that overview, this slide, I think, should be familiar to you from Jamie's presentation. And I'll just start by saying this here, I'm showing you twenty twenty budgeted numbers. As we get into benchmarking, we're then comparing other cities, and you're gonna see a couple different years from twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty. That just is where there was data available, and I'll try to make note of that as we go along, but just be aware that you're gonna see a couple different years. So this is twenty twenty, and it's the budgeted general fund. And as a refresher, the general fund is the primary fund that finances your daily and long-term operations. So it's the, I think, probably Jamie referred to, it's like the checking account. You know, it pays for your community needs. And importantly, Auburn targets having a fund balance of eight to twelve percent of operating expenditures to cover cash flow and continuity of operations. So we'll come back to this. Sheri's actually gonna, gonna come back to that. But that eight to ten, twelve percent fund balance is important. The main takeaway, I think, from this slide is that seventy-one percent of that revenue is coming from taxes. And two of those taxes are somewhat constrained. The property tax, as you're aware, I'm sure, is limited by state law to grow at one percent annually, plus the value of construction, so not unlimited. And sales and use tax can be great in a boom time, not great during a recession, and that's often when you find as a city you need those revenues is in the downturn. So it's volatile to the economy. So there's some challenges for sure with the taxes. So we looked at other cities, and we took, they're not just any other cities, these are obviously the cities that, that are, you know, in the neighborhood. And when we think about people that have choices of where to live or where to locate their businesses, we wanted to make sure that it was, there were sort of comparable choices in the area. So we looked at Auburn, Federal Way, Kent, Renton, and Tuck Willa. And here is an example of where we're back in twenty eighteen, and that's because all cities report data into the state auditor's office. And so for us to get information from cities that we weren't working for, we needed to use this data source. So we're a few years behind, but general trends actually tend to stay the same, particularly when the economy is, is also been the same. And the point here is that Auburn is reliant, as we saw, on property tax, and of these cities has the highest reliance on property tax. So thirty percent of Auburn's general fund budget is property tax. If you look over at Federal Way, it's a little lower at twenty-one percent. Renton, lower yet at seventeen percent. And we'll see what other, what other things are making up the balance there. The other thing to note is just that rent, or, excuse me, Auburn is third in terms of total revenue collected, so it's about seventy million for this year. Kent was the largest at a hundred and twelve million. So the budgets aren't wildly different, and as I say, Auburn's right there in sort of third position. Next, we looked at sales tax, twenty-two percent of the general fund for Auburn, lower for Kent at sixteen percent, higher for some of the other cities. It's got the fourth highest reliance. So, you know, again, fairly comparable. And then finally, utility taxes actually all look roughly the same, except for Tuck Willa, which is a little bit lower. You know, Tuck Willa does have a large mall, so they have, the sales taxes is an important part of their mix. Some say that that's part of the reason there, that that's a little bit lower. So then we put it all together and said, okay, but what does that sort of mix look like with everything together? And I think, this is a lot of numbers to look at all at once, but the important distinction here is that with Kent and Renton, they were a little lower in some of the other areas, and it's partly because they do have a B and O tax, which is their other source of revenue that's making up their general fund. So, you know, the reliance on other sources is a little bit lower because they have this additional tax, which is the B and O tax. I'm gonna just jump to the next slide because you see everything's balanced here, and cities are required to have a balanced budget. And on our next slide, we're showing that in the case of Auburn, there was a fund balance transfer that was done, and so we show that here. We do know that other cities have done this as well, including Federal Way and Renton, I think that year also did it. We don't always know from the, from the state auditor's office data exactly how that all happened, but we do know that there was a transfer made by Auburn. So benchmarking is, it's sort of helpful, it's never exactly, you know, it's never apples-to-apples exactly, because everybody does things slightly different. They may have transfers that we can't see in the data. You know, there's other particularities to any community. I think the reason you do it is just to understand, you know, if we do have a utility tax, are we higher or lower than our peers? Are people doing something different? Yeah, some of them have a B and O tax, and we'll get to that in a minute. So it is helpful to have a look at. It's not, you know, it's not the, the only story.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, the city mayor and council members. For the record, my name is Sheri Sue. I'm with Burke Consulting, and I'll pick up on this presentation where Allegra has left off. So we've talked about city services, and we've talked a little bit about Auburn's funding structure relative to its peers. I now want to talk a little bit about the city's fiscal condition and then end with some fiscal strategies. So the fiscal challenges that I'm about to talk about pertaining to Auburn are not unique to Auburn. They are shared by other cities in the Puget Sound region. Many cities are facing, trying to balance the demand for high-quality services, they, you know, demanded by residents and by visitors and by businesses. They're facing rising labor costs, and they're also facing tax-limiting measures that constrain a city's flexibility in generating revenues. So we developed a fiscal model. We worked with the project team to develop this model that projects revenues and expenditures through twenty twenty-eight. This model aligns with the city's internal forecast model, and we also talked with different department directors to learn about any upcoming operational changes that might impact the city's fiscal condition. So this model shows how different revenue sources might react to different economic conditions based on projected population and employment growth. And on the expenditure side, we assume And on the expenditure side, we assume that the city will maintain its current levels of service and we've also incorporated some cost increases that we know about relating to public safety services and increasing costs for employee salaries and benefits. All right, so before I get to the forecast itself, I'll recap some of what you heard earlier about the general fund and talk about some of the distinctions between the general fund and the cumulative reserve fund. So as you've heard, the general fund, it functions like a checking account. It's used to finance daily and long-term operations and the city has a fund balance target for the general fund of eight to 12%. This is to maintain cash flow and just to maintain continuity of operations. The cumulative reserve fund, it functions more like a savings account. So that is a standalone fund used for one-time financial obligations. That could be capital projects, unforeseen contingencies, or economic downturns. And for the cumulative reserve fund, the city has a target, a target balance of five to 10%. Now, a one-time infusion of $4 million from the cumulative reserve fund into the general fund is already budgeted for 2020. The purpose of that transfer is just to maintain ongoing operations, but that could be seen as the first indicator for the city's fiscal condition. And in, in the long term, it's not really reliable or necessarily recommended as a long-term fiscal strategy to continue that each year. All right, so there are a lot of numbers on this chart. We'll rotate your time to, if I can. But this is the baseline forecast that has incorporated all of the assumptions that we've been talking about. This shows general fund only. And the main takeaway from this is that as you look ahead, those yellow bars indicate estimated total expenditures and those green bars show estimated total revenues. And you can see that expenditure growth is, is already and expected to continue to outpace the growth of revenues. So expenditures are growing at about five and a half percent as an average annual growth rate, while revenues are growing at about a 2.1 rate in term, as an average per year. And we project that there is a $10 to $12 million imbalance each year beginning in 2021. Now, there are a lot of reasons why the city's facing these challenges similar to other cities, as I've mentioned, but, you know, much of that comes from the constraints we've talked about on some of the major revenue sources that support the general fund. So that 1% limit on property tax, that, that's something that all cities must be experiencing as a challenge that's constraining that revenue source. And sales tax, which again makes up about one quarter of the city's general fund budget, that is quite vulnerable to economic conditions and that can fluctuate greatly. In addition to the property and sales tax, I'll just call out two other revenue sources that are planned to sunset. So the annexation sales tax credit and the streamlined sales tax mitigation, those are both tapering off and sunsetting. Each of those are, will reduce, reduce the revenues by about $2 million per year for each of those. All right. So if the city were to continue with its current operations with no changes to fiscal policies, this is what we can expect to happen in the next couple of years. So this chart right here shows fund balance projection. So fund balance builds on the prior year's balance. It doesn't start at zero each year, whatever you end up with in one year, that's where you'll start the next. And as we look forward, we do project that general fund balance would dip below that 12% reserve target in 2022 and that it will eventually hit a negative 13 million in 2024. So this already incorporates that $4 million infusion from the cumulative reserve fund to the general fund in 2020. And that's why that 2020 number still looks around the same as the 2019 number. But looking forward, you know, you'll see that, that dips off quickly. And of course, this forecast is subject to change. There's a lot of assumptions incorporated into these numbers and any kind of economic change could, could affect this, especially with the high reliance on property and sales tax. Another way to think about the city's fiscal condition is with this chart. So here we show general fund revenues and expenditures per capita in constant dollars. That just means it's been inflation adjusted. And what this shows is that during the recession, that's when both of those lines dipped in about 2008, during the recession, the city reduced its staffing levels without significantly reducing service levels. I think that theme is echoed in kind of what you heard in the previous conversation, the previous presentation, which is that the city is continuing to provide these services to residents, to people who are in, who are in the city, even as those conditions are changing around. The city continued to operate at those similar service levels, doing more with less. And that just means that there aren't that many places to cut anymore. You know, looking forward, you can see that revenues are now kind of dipping lower than expenditures per capita. All right, so I'll summarize the last few slides with a couple of takeaways in terms of the city's fiscal condition. The city has been actively managing its finances. It has made decisions to be financially responsible, but it is now caught up to a place where many of, of its peers are. So this is not unique, it's just facing some hard decisions, similar to what other cities have had to make. There is a structural imbalance that begins this year and in a couple of years, that fund balance will hit a critical point. What this means is that decisions need to be made now around whether to implement new revenue sources, whether to enhance existing revenue sources, or to make changes to level of service. And those are, you know, three big options that require a lot more conversation and discussion on which to take. But decisions do need to be made during this year, during this current budget annual process. All right, so given that situation, I want to talk about a couple of strategies and decisions that could be made to raise revenue. So our team looked at several different options and evaluated different tools to understand what their potential to raise revenue and to address the city's fiscal funding gap might be. So today I'll cover the utility tax, so that would be raising utility tax rates since you have those already. Implementing a public safety sales tax, implementing a business and occupation tax, and then a property tax levy lid lift. The first I'll talk about is the utility tax. So the city already has utility taxes. These are imposed on gross operating revenues of public and private utilities that provide services within city boundaries. So public utilities are internal, those are set by the city, and external utilities are private. These revenues are unrestricted and they can be used for any lawful governmental purpose. External utility tax rates are capped at 6% while internal utility tax rates are not capped. So those are the rates that the city could decide to set on its own. And just to summarize on the city's current rates, Auburn's current external utility rate is 6%, of which 5% stays in the general fund. And its internal utility rate is 7%. And out of that, 6% stays in the general fund and 1% is transferred to the city's arterial streets fund. So we took a look at how the city's utility tax rates compare to some of its peers. These are the same cities that appeared in our slides earlier for comparison. You can see here that compared to the peers listed, Auburn's internal utility tax rates are on the lower end of the spectrum. So that just means that there is potentially room for adjustment. That's a decision that would be up to the city, but those are some numbers that you could consider and take into mind, consideration. We looked at how much, how much additional revenue would the city be able to generate if it raised rates? So those, the three bars on the left, the shortest three bars there, show that additional incremental revenue that the city might be able to generate in one year if it were to match the rates of its peers. So Federal Way, Taquilla, and Kent are shown in the three different colors there. You can see that's a huge range, anywhere from $600,000 to $5 million annually in terms of an additional revenue. It completely depends on what rates the city chooses to set and there can be different rates for different types of utilities. The three bars on the right show the total revenue that we estimate the city would be able to bring in over eight years from 2020 through 2028. Again, there's a huge range depending on what rates the city chooses to set. All right. The second option I'll cover today is the public safety sales tax. So cities can impose a sales tax of up to 0.1% for public safety. This does require voter approval by simple majority and certain sales are exempt. So specifically motor vehicle sales and the first 36 months of motor vehicle leases are exempt. These revenues are partially restricted, so at least a third must be used for criminal justice purposes or fire protection purposes. And these revenues must be shared with the county. So the city would retain 85% and then King or Pierce County would receive 15% of that tax. So there are some restrictions on this option. We estimate that this option would bring in about $1.2 million annually for the city and that over eight years, that would be around 10 million in new revenue. Third option that we'll talk about today is the business and occupation tax for gross receipts. So cities can authorize a business and occupation tax, known as a BNO tax, of up to 0.2% of gross receipts without voter approval. There is a huge amount of flexibility in terms of how the city chooses to set up that structure. There are different reporting thresholds and income exemptions, deductions, and credits. And that just means the city can really customize that option to fit what the city needs. And these rates could also vary by industry, so different types of businesses could have different rates, just depending on what kind of incentive structure the city wishes to set up. As we talked about earlier, businesses do benefit from city infrastructure in specific ways and they're not currently taxed as a class for those benefits. So BNO taxes could potentially help balance who pays with who benefits in the sense that it introduces a new group of payers in addition to consumers or utility talks, utility users or property owners. It just introduces a new group of payers. It does require a significant implementation period. So BNO taxes typically require time to engage with the business community, to raise awareness, hear about concerns, and just time for the city to talk with businesses and find out what is the best structure that would meet the city's needs. So we took a look at what some of the, some other cities are setting as rates and what are some of the revenues that they're generating with BNO. We're showing Bellingham, Kent, and Renton. Shoreline did implement a BNO effective January 2019. It, it's not in the state auditor's data yet, so we only have data for the, the first three cities up top, but you can see the rates shown below. All right, so I'm thinking about what kind of revenue we, the city would be able to generate from a BNO tax. We used data that we obtained from the Department of Revenue and estimated that if, if Auburn were to implement a BNO for gross receipts of the maximum rate of 0.2% across all business sectors with no exemptions, it could bring in somewhere between 6.5 to 8.3 million. As I said before, and I'll emphasize again, there is a lot of flexibility in these rates. We provided a couple of different scenarios below for different rates to match Kent or Renton or Shoreline. And you can see on the far right that those revenues are anywhere from 2 to 6 to 8 million. So it, it depends, it depends greatly on those rates. A lot of cities also have income restrictions to protect small businesses and that's an option that the city could pursue as well. So Kent exempts businesses under $250,000 a year and Renton and Shoreline both have exemptions under $500,000. So there's a lot of options and the city could, as the city, if the city chooses to move forward with this, they could think about how they want to structure the rates. So another type of BNO tax, it's, it's actually a business license, but it's a square footage business license fee, not, not technically a tax, but it is also imposed on businesses. And again, cities can exempt businesses under any kind of square footage thresholds. We assumed a 10 cent per square foot tax and estimated that the city could bring in about $2.8 million annually. Okay, the final option that I'll talk about tonight is the property tax levy lid lift. As you've heard earlier, the current property tax increases are limited by state law to 1% plus the value of new construction per year. So that was about $219,000, $218,000, $219,000, thank you, over the last year. A levy lid lift would allow cities to, to exceed that 1% annual levy lid. It does require voter approval and the, and the rates cannot exceed the statutory maximum rate. There are a couple of different options in terms of how to implement a levy lid lift. So it could be single year or it could be multi-year, it could be temporary, or it could be permanent. There are a lot of nuances that I won't go into right now in terms of how those are structured differently. But we've estimated that a levy lid lift could generate about $2.5 million annually. I know it's not listed on this slide, but it will be in the summary slide coming up. And that over eight years, that would be about $18 million. So one thing to consider is that a lot of factors can impact a levy lid lift success on the ballot, including what else is on the ballot. So that is just something to consider if the city were to pursue that option, to think about timing and what else might be going on. All right. Here we have summarized the revenue tools that I've talked about. The chart shows estimated revenues, whether these options require voter approval, whether they're restricted, and what group of taxpayers is affected. So I'll conclude our presentation today with a couple of slides summarizing some takeaways as you move forward and make decisions to make during this current process. I'll just start by saying again that the relationship between revenues and expenditures have a cumulative impact on fund balance. It's not looking at one of those in isolation. Everything affects, you know, other numbers and it all kind of accumulates. And even though the city has been equally responsible in the past and it has been active to manage its condition, the existing service model is not financially sustainable and that just means that decisions need to be made now during this current budget process to address that unsustainability, to avoid future fiscal imbalance. And there isn't just one tool that will fix the gap. It will require a multi-pronged approach, looking at this from different timelines and from different perspectives. If the city is thinking about any cost containment strategies, it's important to think about service level impacts. So any kind of modifications to one service in one department, that will ripple throughout the system. And over time, you know, reducing one service level in one department, that could affect the system and affect the city's livability and viability as an economic center. In the long run, that in turn can have short and long-term impacts on future revenues as people, as residents and businesses decide, you know, whether to continue living here or doing business in the city. So that's something to consider. On the flip side, any considerations of revenue enhancement should, should think about some factors such as equity, timing, and magnitude. So for equity, some questions to consider are where is there a disconnect between who is currently paying for city services and who benefits from them? And what revenue strategies might help to rebalance that? In terms of timing, some things to think about are when could the strategy be feasibly implemented? Some options might require more time. Some options might require more time to engage with the public and to educate people and also to hear from people about what their needs are and how the city can best address those needs with some of these revenue options. For the third bullet here, magnitude, that's thinking about which strategy could be an option that really strengthens the city's fiscal condition and really makes a difference. So that chart on the previous slide, you know, you can see there are different magnitudes in terms of generated, and it's important to look at the time that it takes and the work to implement some of these options and what can come out of it in terms of how much revenue can the city bring. To conclude, it's important for the city to stay in communication with residents so that residents in the city understand the short and long-term impacts of different revenue options, whether that is using additional funds. Just understanding that there is no permanent solution. This is not a quick fix type of situation. This is an ongoing conversation. It will take a long-term approach and constant and evolving conversations about how to best meet needs of the revenue. Thank you. That's that. We're happy to take questions.
Questions? Gotta have one.
To commit to process as well.
Well, it's interesting to see the difference in how we looked at this when we had our special council meetings regarding the financial structure. Shelley presented it to us, and some of the similarities that you're bringing in today related to that. And I know I had a discussion with you guys on this with some suggestions as well, but when we see things like our FTE stability and the difference between revenues and expenditures, and you said it in here, the city does a whole lot more or a whole lot less now. To me, it was interesting to hear Director Faber saying for the last 19 years, he's only increased by two FTEs in 19 years. So we have maintained since, well, we actually have gone back almost even with FTEs from recessionary time. So we haven't gained. We broke even on that. We are the 15th largest city in the state now, out of 281 cities, and we've had about a 20% growth since 2010, and that's going to continue. So we have to look at how we're going to sustain and maintain services in this revenue situation and expenditure situation. You know, we've all been to Olympia, we've all, Mayor's been there talking through this. Probably not a council member in the state that hasn't talked to our state legislatures about the 1% property tax cap. Many of them are on board with it, but we're handcuffed in some respects now. We can handle that. So I guess my word to the council is that this is our budget season, and we have a lot of work to do as a council. This is probably the most significant budget season that this council, past councils, and future councils will face. Our decisions that we make are going to set the pace for future councils and for the future direction of the city. And with Burke's help, with Jamie's help, Kevin and the rest of you, everybody, Bob and everybody else, we really have our work cut out for us. One of the things I talked to Jamie about that we'd like to see coming back in is when Director Coleman was here, and they still have it, I think Kevin and you still have it, is that graph that showed the various different revenue options and how the bars move up and down in relation to what we choose and how we choose that, and what that means for stability and what it means for maybe having a higher level of fund balance in the general fund, because that's what we're going to need to do. I was a little bit concerned, overly concerned, when I saw the 7.75%. We're supposed to maintain 8%, 8 to 12. So even with the fund balance transfer, we're already dropping slightly below at 8%, which is not a healthy choice, but it's our only choice we can make at this point in time. So I just, it's going to be a real serious fiscal year and a real serious budget year for all seven of us here. So I would definitely entertain some questions from my colleagues. Comments?
I just have one. Thank you for bringing this to us, because this has been brought up to us last year as well about us bringing the BNO tax, and it really caused uproar with the businesses here in town. And so, but seeing everything here in front of us, where we're at now and how we've been sustaining what we have, it's really nice to see this. Now, will this be out to the public so that they can also see, you know, how it's not really going to, it's going to hurt a little, but it's something we definitely need in our city to bring our finances in here. But I just really thank you for bringing this.
Yeah. So the wonderful consultants from Burke are not telling you what you have to do. That's going to be council's decision, so no one is going to sit here and tell you that you have to do a BNO tax. That will be a very thoughtful and long discussion and decision-making process by this council in order to determine what the fiscal health of the city is moving forward. So there are a lot of options, as they presented this evening, and it will most likely be a combination of many of those. No one funding source is going to put the city on a financial trajectory that will be able to be sustained. So it's going to have to be the council looking at a lot of different options within those revenue generation options in order to determine what the right mix is.
Right. And that's what I'm basically saying. It's nice that they brought these options to us in different ways, but the BNO tax did bring up such an alarm in our city when we even, you know, talked about it. So anyways, okay.
As the mayor said, I mean, we have a number of options that we have to look at. I'd like to basically repeat what the mayor said over and over again. You know, first of all, the city is not bankrupt, and we will not go bankrupt. We can't anyhow, but we won't do that. We're not Orange County, California, where we file bankruptcy. You know, we're not in dire straits here, but we do have, I use the word opportunity, you know, to look as visionaries in how we go forward. And some of the decisions that we may go forward with definitely require voter approval, like the levy lid lift, which we talked about extensively during our last meetings. And then looking at the other options that are presented to us, so again, using kind of that graph of how we decide to balance that out and what that means in relation to our business community, our residential community, and all those affected. You know, we look at who pays and who benefits. That's the key. You know, that's the thing that I think we have to look at very closely is who pays and who benefits, and what does that benefit mean to those that are benefited by the decisions that we make here? So it's going to be interesting over the next few months and what we do. Appreciate the work that you folks have done, picking up after Shelley left and kind of going forward with this. Councilmember Brown.
Yes. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I really appreciate the way you set this discussion. This is what we get paid the big bucks for as council members, which, by the way, we don't get paid big bucks, which we'd have a bigger problem than. But I do think that this is time for serious discussion for us, to be looking at the future for our city. What do we plan to lead for our kids and grandkids as a city? You know, it's easy to make quick judgments, but the right judgment usually takes a lot of discussion, a lot of work, a lot of input from members of our community, residents and businesses. And who can pay is also an issue, I think. It's not just who benefits and who pays. It's who can pay is the way that I want to make sure we're looking at it. So we want to be very thoughtful as we move forward. So I appreciate. One question I would have is what is the scope of the contract for our Burke consultants? Will they be with us throughout this process? Or, I know this is great information, but I think we'll have more questions in the future.
Yes.
Is that an ongoing relationship, or is this the finished product?
This was the completion of the existing contract. That said, Burke has a ton of data and a lot of information that they've also provided us that extends beyond this presentation, and I'm sure, I don't mean to speak for Elegor or Sherry, but I'm sure that they would be more than happy to discuss any other future engagements that we may need if you guys would like that as well.
I think one last thing from you per council. When we looked at the 20% population growth since 2010, some of the projections here take us to 2028. You know, even if we have a 15% growth, you know, period of time, we need to think how we're going to provide the services that need to be provided with what we've known all along as a population of 100,000 people. You know, we're a big city now. We're going to be even a bigger city with a population of 100,000. Dynamics between 82,000, 100,000 really change significantly for cities when you reach that 100,000 population.
And lest we forget, over the course of time, the city has not been irresponsible fiscally. It's that revenues have been taken away from council. The streamlined sales tax that we often talk about, and yes, in the state legislature, we have been able to receive mitigation of roughly $2 million per year. However, all that does is keep us whole at 2009, I believe, 2009 levels. So that means we have remained flat, because if you consider that there has been significant growth in the economy and growth in sales, so we have remained flat as opposed to that incremental increase in sales tax that we are not getting. We're flat, and the mitigation of $2 million a year, hopefully we have in the state legislature for three more years, but that's not guaranteed. There was discussion, and we also went down last year and talked about the incentive opportunity, because we are a manufacturing and warehousing area, the fourth largest in the country in the Valley, and we have worked very closely with Kent and other, what you consider loser cities, on the streamlined sales tax and the warehousing area that we have that provides a vital service to not just this region, but to the country when you consider the ports and the opportunity for warehousing before all of the freight gets shipped across the country. But we were considered one of the loser cities in that streamlined sales tax determination that was made roughly 10, a little over 10 years ago. So just keep in mind, it's not that we have been outrageously spending. Everything has become more expensive. There is not one thing that increases at 1% per year as far as expenses, but the revenue generation from property taxes, which you saw is a significant source of revenue for us, is increased at 1% per year plus new construction. None of our expenses are going up at 1% per year, even if we did add in new construction. So it's Mayor Ralph, when we were down in Olympia last week testifying on another issue, I think said it perfectly. That which is done for us without us is done to us, and that's exactly where we have been for many, many years. And so now it is time for this city council and the city to make some decisions about our own fiscal health going forward.
Any last comments from council?
I believe that we should dust off the studies that we did as a council for the benefit of the new council members and share with them what our thoughts were, which kind of follows some of the same patterns here, and sources for revenues and what have you. And I think that that's going to be almost mandatory when we go into the budget retreat to dust it off and make it visible.
I think most of it is captured within this Burke study.
Thank you, ladies, very much. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Look forward to your future discussions. Let's go ahead and take about a five-minute break. We have a very full agenda tonight, so let's come back in about 7:03.
You're looking a lot better when you're late, so yeah, very good.
My kids and I went walking, and we found this, because there was a bunch of garbage on that. So I took it home, and my husband cleaned it all up, and he did it, so.
Hey, Chief.
Good, how are you? Good.
I'm just curious to clarify.
Sure, we have a, we have a strategy.
Hi.
How are you doing?
How are you?
You feeling bitter?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Are you going to be driving again?
I'm driving.
Okay.
And we'll take them.
I have the A3. Well, that's good. I've been reading the instructions.
See my daughter.
Is everything good? Yeah, I'm at city council, so we're on a couple-minute break, but I got a breakaway. Feeling good. Thank you, sweetie. Love you too. Bye-bye. My daughter, I'm sick. She's checking on me.
That's good. That's always good. Quick question for you. So I shot you this email when you weren't able to make the meeting all day. I have a special focus here to have. So I assume you didn't have any questions on kind of what the list was. My main question for you on that is capital facility, the capital project update review. We actually need each one of these. Push it off this agenda because it's so long. Do you want us to continue doing those? So that's where Brian comes in, doesn't care how the project, future project discussion with you, and also has the spreadsheet there in the packet that you guys have. I think it's useful for the more council members to keep that information a little bit more detailed.
Yeah.
See my daughter. Is everything good? Uh, yeah, I'm at city council, so we're on a couple-minute break, but I got a breakaway. Feeling good. Thank you, sweetie. Love you too. Bye-bye. My daughter, I'm sick. She's checking on me.
That's good. That's always good. Quick question for you. So I shot you this email when you weren't able to make your meeting all day. So I assume you didn't have any questions. I'm kind of like this. My main question for you on that is capital facility, a capital project update review. We actually need each one of these. Pushed it off this agenda because it was so long. Do you want us to continue doing those? So that's where Brian comes in, doesn't care how the project, future project discussion with you and also has the spreadsheet there in the packet that you guys have.
Sure.
Yeah, so I moved it to the 24th.
Okay.
So we're going to do it on the general session of the 24th, just because this was such a busy day. I was like, I don't want to add it. By the time we get to the end, you guys are going to be like glassy-eyed and not paying attention anyway.
You know, um, if, if ever. Because I mean, I just. I only get like 200 to 300 emails a day. Managing more than one email to me is a little difficult.
Okay, okay. No, that's good to know. I know she set up the next one of those meetings and hopefully that works for both you and Chris's me, uh, schedules. So we did sit down with Chris last week and we kind of went through it. Did a lot of training and background. Definitely. And if you want to sit down between now and the next one and just kind of talk through kind of that sheet that I sent in that email.
Okay.
About what it is and kind of what that format looks like happening.
Okay.
And I can just, you can just do it online if you have time.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Hey, how you doing, Ken?
Brown, sir. I was thinking about the time such that number one, somebody should be running for the seat.
Oh, okay.
22, I took over this council in 18. Two, you know, respect. Next time somebody steps in to return. But I was thinking of how you're running this program, State Labor Council, half the power. I don't.
Yeah, why did I do? Yes.
Yeah. I don't know if you ever took, um, I, you know, I might have two, two to three-day class. And essentially.
Yeah, um, yeah.
Hi, yeah, I'm trying to figure who that might have been at the time, but Theresa Muscata was running. I went through.
Okay, let's go ahead and call a meeting back to order. Everybody take your seats, please. So next on our agenda item is item 3C, South King County base site selection for King County Metro. And we have Cecile Malek with us, your senior planner. Anyway.
Good evening. So yes, King County Metro is working on a project to identify a new bus base in South King County. So City Staff reached out to the team and invited them to come and talk to speak council about the project and, and the process. So I'll see if you have questions for City Staff. Jeff Arbuckle from King County Metro will take it away.
Thank you. Evening. I'm Jeff Arbuckle. I'm the Capital Projects Managing Supervisor for King County Metro's Operational Capacity Growth Program. Want to start by saying we appreciate your time and we're very excited to be here engaging with the city of Auburn on our next major project. The past several years have shown rapid growth for King County, with South King County being the recipient of much of that growth. In order to align our service and support regional growth, King County Metro released Metro Connects in 2017. It was our visionary approach to our future service through 2040. That growth included 2.5 million more service hours and grows our fleet by over 600 buses. It's a 40% increase in what we have today. Supporting those additional buses requires additional maintenance and operation space for our, for our fleet. In 2018, we began development of the Operational Capacity Growth Program. The program focused on effective short and long-term solutions to increase Metro's operational capacity growth. First, by enhancing our campuses in the central business district. Second, by creating short and long-term capacity in our south campus in Tukwila. And third, by adding a new campus in South King County to better support our south-end service. Why South King County? Our new base in South King County is expected to maximize the time a bus spends in revenue service and reduce the time spent traveling without riders by citing a facility near the start and endpoints of major routes. The new facility is also expected to make a meaningful contribution to the community through improved air quality to South King County by deploying an all-electric fleet. The investment will provide Metro an opportunity to explore a variety of partnerships in the local community, including training and apprenticeship programs, and may spur economic development, providing approximately 400 to 600 jobs during the planning, construction, and long-term operations of the new facility. We'd also expect localized impact with strong growth and patronage to existing local retail and commercial establishments near the site. The new South King County base is expected to support 250 electric buses with an estimated cost of $480 million, which includes purchasing the site and building and opening the base as soon as 2030. We do not expect this facility to look like our existing bases. Depending on the sighting and local community needs, Metro is intending to consider a mixed use of sites on this, on the location. The referenced images reflect the industry's next generation of bus depots in both Los Angeles and San Francisco. These highlight modernized, less industrial architecture and the benefits of a mixed-use transit operations. Our facilities in Auburn could include co-location opportunities for the city, training and apprenticeship facilities, community spaces, or other mixed-use commercial or retail developments. We conducted a land search in South King County, identifying and evaluating 20 candidate sites across a variety of criteria. These criteria examined the compatibility of existing and surrounding land use, reasonable availability for future development, avoidance of sensitive areas, and opportunities to advance King County's social equity and sustainability goals. We targeted a buildable site of approximately 30 acres with good access to major freeways and arterial roads. From those 20 sites, a top-level list of three highly likely potential sites was generated, with two in Auburn, one in Kent. Our first site is located in Kent at South 196th Street and 68th Avenue South. The site is between 25 and 38 acres, is configured in a, in a way ideal for a bus base and is flat and open. There's good access from all surrounding streets and is large enough to accommodate a 250 bus base with additional space for additional functions, mixed-use development, or future expansion. Our second site is located in Auburn at South 277th Street and D Street Northeast. The configuration of the site is in ideal shape for a bus base and it is relatively flat and open. There's good access from several of the rounding streets. This site currently has a residential development underway on the southern edge, which has limited the available size of the base development. Our third site is also in Auburn at 37th Street Northwest and B Street Northwest. Configuration of the site is in ideal shape for a bus base and is relatively flat. The site is large enough to accommodate a 250 bus base with additional space for other functions, mixed-use development, and/or future expansion. Access is limited on this site due to adjacent rail lines and weatherlines. Metro publicly announced the three candidate sites on June 26, 2019 through a press release and other media channels with the goal of opening communications with key stakeholders and the public about the site selection process. Regional tribes were notified informally prior to their press release through our King County Executive's Office. We also notified state legislatures in the district that three sites were located. We did conduct a survey in late October through early November to gather a baseline understanding of Auburn and Kent's community perceptions of a potential bus base in their area. We promoted the survey through a mailer to communities surrounding the sites and concurrent outreach for other metro programs in South King County. Auburn and Kent neighborhood coordinators were also provided the survey information and a link to distribute to their communities. Our survey was available in English, Russian, Spanish, Vietnamese, simplified Chinese, and traditional Chinese. We had 188 respondents with 68 self-identifying as being from Auburn. 41% of those were familiar with Metro's plan to expand our facilities. 59% of those from Auburn felt positive about locating a new bus base in their community. From those who noted a location preference, most wanted the base near their community in anticipation of potential developments, including access to job opportunities and improvements to the physical look of the existing properties. Along with general support for locating the bus base in South King County, respondents also noted several concerns, including future impacts to travel, both from construction disruptions where on road and increased traffic, as well as potential impacts to the environment. Metro has a very strong commitment to our community. We plan to engage Auburn residents and keep them informed and involved in the site selection. And if a site in Auburn is selected, we will ensure that public engagement during all future phases occurs. Prime example of this type of engagement is occurring right now in Tukwila as we move to expand our operation there, where we coordinated a community roundtable to help identify elements and amenities that could further, that could further equity and social justice goals in the area. Attendees included the Partners in Employment, Living Well Kent, Global to Local, and Environmental Coalition of South Seattle. Looking down the road, we're hoping to complete our site selection process and initiate the Federal Transit Administration Concurrent Process by the end of the year, with a targeted acquisition completion by the end of 2024. Groundbreaking of the bus facility is expected in 2026 with the first buses rolling out in 2030. More information. I'm more than happy to take any questions tonight. My contact information is also on the screen. Happy to take any questions now or in the future.
Questions? I have one. You mentioned community amenities and you had a nice slide showing what's been done in Los Angeles and San Francisco. I'm curious, as the site sees on 37th and D Street, envision what type of community amenities you would look at. That's kind of a different corridor for business activities there. I'm not sure it would be a shopping district, but what kind of ideas have you got for that?
The biggest benefit in my role is that we get to go out to the community and find out what they think they need. I, I know in talking with your staff, something that has been voiced to us is potential co-location of city facilities. You might be looking for some space to expand your services. That could bring an amenity to the community by providing some additional space for the city. Other things, we'd reach out to the neighborhood. We certainly do have a substantial number of operators and other folks that work at these bases full-time, although it might not be an ideal location for traditional retail, maybe fast-service food or something like that to help supply both our staff and those that work in the immediate area. Might be something we'd all benefit from, but we would certainly want to approach the community and, and yourselves and see how we could best meet those needs.
And also, looking at your schedule, 10 years seems to be a long time.
It does. The timeline is highly variable in terms of the development. Acquisition is our primary unknown in this, is we have to get through a federal concurrency process to be able to allow us to procure the site, and then we have to move through the actions to be able to buy it. So we would certainly be amenable to bringing that timeline back depending on what happens in terms of demand from the region and in terms of our ability to actually acquire the site and start construction on it. We believe that 2030 is about as realistic as we can get at this point, so.
Other questions? Councilmember Mollina.
You mentioned that this is, this jobs.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Mollina and then Councilmember Trump.
Okay, I'm sorry. Didn't see your hand go up.
Do you guys have any other of these sites that you're doing right now currently?
For new locations, new bases?
Yeah.
We're only looking in South King County for the new, so we have these three sites here. We are building a new base in Tukwila on a site we already own.
Oh, okay.
So it, it is a new base, but it is not on a new location. We've currently had a variety of different operations there.
Thank you.
Okay, you mentioned you, this is going to bring jobs to our city. But then I see on page 14, 33, that it's going to bring three jobs, three initials, three-to-one FTAs. Or how many jobs are, are going to come into Auburn due to this project?
The base itself will have an operations staff of around 400 to 600, depending on how many shifts we run out of the base. Between operators, mechanics, folks that dispatch, folks that maintain the base, and all those types of things that are housed. 400 to 600, depending on how many shifts, how many buses, how many routes we actually run.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Jay Raj.
So, where are we going to be serving on the bus routes?
From this base?
Yes.
The most efficient use of these buses would be south-end routes, so things that primarily start or end down in South King County. We have what we call deadhead time, which is the time a bus travels and doesn't have passengers onboard. I certainly can't tell you exactly what routes it would serve. We're not that far along in the planning, but it's much more effective for us to place a base where those routes operate from the start of the endpoints.
So, is it going up north?
Yes. Many of our routes do run up north, so it's, it's still more effective for us. Those buses would start here, make their runs up north, come back and end their day here.
Okay.
Any other questions? Councilmember Mollina.
So these are the current, service current routes, or are you guys adding new routes when you finish the bus?
Metro Connects is adding a substantial number of routes. I'm, I'm not super well-informed of Metro Connect, so I can figure out what the exact quantity is and get back to you. But there is service expansion as well as not only new routes, but additional capacity on routes, so more buses on those routes to reduce the time between buses. All that's handing, happening between now and 2040, so it is new routes and, and more service on existing routes.
All right. Okay, Jeff, Cecile, thank you very much.
Thank you all for the time.
Okay, next item on our list, item 3D, ordinance number 6756.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Harry Beauchesne, the city's chief prosecutor. I know most of you, but a couple of you I don't know if I've met before. I have served the city in that capacity for, it'll be 13 years in a couple, in a couple of months. Tonight, I am here to ask you to consider passing an ordinance criminalizing assaulting a city officer. And a little bit of background on where this came from and what it means. It starts with assaults on our police officers. That's sort of the, what generated this idea and the perceived need for this from my office. Assaults under state law are graded by the, as felonies or misdemeanors, by the seriousness of the injury traditionally. So the more serious of an injury that results from an assault, the more serious the degree of the assault. And it would get, you know, up to felonies for most serious injuries. State law defines all assaults on police officers as felonies, regardless of the injury that's caused. And the reason for that is the legislature wanted to recognize that when a police officer and some other types of vulnerable types of victims, bus drivers, medical professionals, other types of folks that are in high risk for assaults and vulnerable situations, wanted to recognize that those types of victims deserve enhanced protection through a more serious charge and through, through a felony charge. Okay. So state law defines those as felonies. King County has adopted guidelines for charging cases that are over and above what the state law requires. And some of you may remember a couple of years ago, I think it was a couple of years ago, or maybe it was last year, identity theft. We did a local ordinance on identity theft because, for example, identity theft at state law is a felony regardless of the loss that's caused to the victim. In, in King County, they've adopted guidelines that say that it's going to be charged as a felony only if it's above a certain loss to the victim. And so we wanted to capture those cases that, well, what about the ones that don't rise to that level? Those need to be prosecuted. And we're in a very similar situation here. It's just in a different context. We have a, a number of cases that are referred to county that don't get charged as felonies, although they could be legally because of guidelines that they have adopted. They require very, very significant injury to the officer or the use of a weapon or some other things that if those things aren't present in the assault, they don't get charged at, at the felony level. And so they come to our office, my office, to prosecute. My office is responsible for. My office is responsible for misdemeanors and gross misdemeanors, not felonies. And so, I can't charge someone with assault in third degree on a police officer. So, the question is, well, what can I do with those cases if they come to me? And I've got two options, and I laid them out in the recitals to the proposed ordinance. We've been working under that rubric for some time, but we recognized, recently we had a case involving an assault on one of our officers, and I was staffing that with another prosecutor who was trying the case. And we talked about some of the difficulties with that. We charged that as an attempted assault in the third degree, and we had to charge that because that reduces the crime down to a misdemeanor level, that's something that we can charge. The problem with that is it's kind of a, it's a fiction, because it's not exactly what happened. What happened was a completed act of assault on a police officer. The person didn't try to assault them, they did assault them, but we have to charge them as trying to assault them to sort of accomplish this legal goal. And that could create some confusion and some difficulty for us in presenting a case in court and to a jury and such. So, the other option we have is just to charge them with assault in the fourth degree, which is our statewide misdemeanor assault crime that's on the books. The downside about that is that there is nothing in that law that indicates to anyone reviewing the case that this was a police officer victim. And if you charge that and put that on someone's history, it's, you wouldn't know just by looking at that, that who was involved in the case. And so, in drafting this ordinance, I wanted to give a nice straightforward theory about what the case is about. It's not an attempt, it's a completed act of assault. And I also wanted a fence that indicates and makes clear to those reviewing it that a police officer was on the receiving end of this assaultive act. And when I was putting it together, part of me said, well, there are other city officials that we have that are in similar circumstances, code enforcement, animal control officers and parking, those pseudo-police enforcement type of officials that we have that are also prone to potentially situations like this, and so they should be included as well. So, that is the purpose behind this proposed ordinance. I think it makes sense for us to do that, to have the legal recognition that we want and to address it cleanly and easily so that we capture these cases that... And just so you know, I got some numbers from the police department. We have since 2000 and all of 19 and the first part of 20, I believe it was 22 total cases, so we're looking at approximately, that's total of police officer assaults. And my office has gotten so far out of that group. Some of them are still at large and pending review and things, but my office has got seven of those. So, but we're looking at about a third of the overall charges that are being in this sort of limbo, and that would be addressed by this ordinance, so.
So, questioner, so the ones that are not limber, are those actually being prosecuted by the county prosecutor?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so they're not just setting it aside saying, we're not going to do it. They are looking at some, but like I said, it has to be very significant before they take it on.
Correct. It has to be a set of facts that would justify, and some of those, just so you know, that two types of cases go to county. One are the ones that they accept for adults, the other are juvenile. So, all the juvenile offenders have to go to county as well, because they're the only ones who have jurisdiction to prosecute juveniles for non-traffic crimes, so. To my understanding, they are. And some of have been resolved already, some are still pending in the courts.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you very much for being here. It, I'm curious, what would be the circumstances for an adult that would commit an assault on a police officer that the prosecuting attorneys on, King County Prosecutor, would not pursue as a case, a felony case? How is that possible?
The guidelines are no significant pain or injury. They want to see things like the officer was forced to the ground, they want to see things like it took multiple officers to subdue the assailant, attempting to disarm the police officer, using a weapon, some kind of an aggravating factor. Now, the law doesn't require aggravating factors, it's just the victim's a police officer, that elevates it. But that's what they want to see in the guidelines.
So, just so you're around, I think most of you are, we have been working with the other South King County mayors, police chiefs, and prosecuting attorneys and city attorneys to have a meeting with Satterburg, county prosecutor Satterburg's office on FADS filing and...
Disposition standards.
Thank you, standards. Because we do believe that there are a lot of, a lot of things that are not being charged out of his office. There was supposed to be a meeting, I think it was last week or possibly this week, and it has to be changed because Mr. Satterburg will not be in town. But there are a number of us in South King County who are frustrated by the filing practices or lack of filing practices. And we're not going in in an adversarial position, but just going in with the facts and data from each of our respective cities and asking for support in filing. And if they don't believe in filing it as a felony, then it is still their responsibility not to move it back to our cities to file, which is an added expense for us, but they also have the ability to file it as a misdemeanor. Am I correct? Harry?
Yes, they can. It's a little bit tricky, but they can. They can do that.
As opposed to sending them back to us to file.
Okay, other questions? Councilmember Baggett?
Harry, you mentioned a few other professions that are not identified in the draft ordinance. Are they, like you mentioned, I think lawyers or attorneys or medical people?
In the state law?
Well, is it our intent to incorporate that in here as well?
No, so I was only referencing city personnel, the ones that are identified in the ordinance. The state law includes not only police, but it includes medical professionals and bus drivers and some others that the legislature has deemed worthy of that status. That's at the state law.
So, these are pretty specific to these professions here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, other questions? Thank you, Harry, for bringing this forward and for taking the action. You'll probably recall the extensive discussion we had on the identity theft issue, and we were able to accomplish there as well, so I'm glad to see you're taking action, and we hope King County will do their part, and appreciate the mayor and others taking up that challenge and meeting with Satterburg.
Thank you for your time. Thank you. I'll back up here now.
All right. All right, item 3E, ordinance number 6760, Director Thomas.
Ordinance 6760 is asking the council to authorize an ordinance to levy an additional sales tax option that we have. We've been doing this for the last 11 years, and this was a result of a legislative bill that was passed in 2009 by, or it was passed by the legislature back in 2009, which allows cities to levy this additional sales tax, to levy up to $250,000 a year to pay and finance what they call local revitalization areas. And the city took advantage of that. The requirement of the city was that they would need to get approved a local revitalization area, which we did. We have to have matching dollars, which we do. We issued $7.24 million in 2010, and between the money that we received from the sales tax levy as well as our own matching dollars, we were able to do a lot of improvements in the downtown revitalization area. So, this is just something that we have to do every year to be able to claim our $250,000. We can do this for 25 years, and we also, the timing of our bonds is a 25-year repayment. So, at the time that our option to levy the additional sales tax is over, the bonds will also be, will be paid for. Amazing.
This is against the state's sales tax. This is not issuing additional sales tax to be collected from consumers. This is against the state's portion of the sales tax.
Thank you, Mayor. Very important distinction. Yes, so the state receives a smaller portion of the sales tax and it comes to us instead. Thank you very much.
Questions from council? Okay, Jamie, thank you.
Thank you.
And item 3F, resolution 5498, again, Jamie.
I'm here again. This is more of a housekeeping item. We, one of our funds is the, is our community and housing repair program, which is funded with CDBG funds. Based on how the grant works, we cannot submit for reimbursement until we've actually spent the money down. So, from a cash flow standpoint, we spend our money before we get to money. And legally, we cannot allow a fund to go negative, so we are asking for permission for you to approve, and it gives us the ability to have an interfund loan, so the general fund can float the housing repair program fund until we get reimbursement from the federal grant. And this just gives us the legal authority to do that once a resolution is adopted by council.
Any questions? All right, thank you. Now, we have the Public Works and Community Development Discussion Item Special Focus Group, and Harry, we'll turn that over to Councilmember Brown.
Yes, thank you. So, first, on this area of special interest, is we have ordinance number 6735, and Amber is here to present.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, council members. Mayor, I'm Amber Price, Right-of-Way Specialist with Public Works Department. I'm here tonight to discuss draft ordinance number 6735 for franchise number FRN 19-0006 for City of Tacoma Water with you. Since we have some new council members, I would like to take this opportunity to give you a brief overview of what a franchise agreement is, why we do them, and what processes for an applicant. Allow you any time to ask any questions about it, and then go over the Tacoma Water franchise. If that's good with everybody. So, consistent with federal and state law, the city is authorized to exercise local authority with respect to regulations of activities for utility telecommunications and cable companies, including utilities such as electric, gas, water, sewer, and storm, that have their facilities or want to locate their facilities in the city's right-of-way. Under Title 20 of the Auburn City Code, utility and telecom and cable companies that want to locate their facilities in our streets are required to obtain a franchise agreement. The regulations of these companies and their facilities throughout the franchise agreement allows the city to permit and manage reasonable access of the public right-of-way of the city on competitively neutral basis, conserve the limited physical capacity of the public right-of-way held in public trust by the city, fairly and responsibly protect public health, safety, and welfare, assure that utility telecommunications and cable companies utilizing the right-of-way comply with ordinances, rules, and regulations of the city, and assure that the city's current and ongoing cost of granting and regulating private access and use of the public right-of-way are fully paid for by persons seeking or using such access and causing such costs to the extent that the state and federal law allow us. A franchise agreement does not allow utility or telecommunications or cable company to place their facilities on private property, city property, or facilities such as water towers or buildings. Those types of uses would require at least a license or an easement or some other applicable agreement with the property owner for such use. The process for a company to obtain a franchise agreement would be, start, the city would negotiate with the applicant using a standard franchise form, and then the specific details of their utility or telecom or cable would be mutually negotiated. Some of the standard requirements for applicants include providing insurance, indemnification and hold harmless, financial securities, and the requirement to obtain construction permits prior to installing those facilities. Depending on the type of facility they're proposing, the city might require higher insurance limits, additional bonding, or specific emergency response language. Other provisions include the requirement for the applicant to relocate or underground their facilities at no cost to the city to accommodate city projects for capital improvements. Any proposed language revisions to the standard form are reviewed by the city's legal department and risk management, as well as additional city staff. State and city code dictates that the city has 180 days to process their application, hold a public hearing, and for the city council to make a decision on the application of whether to approve or deny it. If council approves a franchise, the applicant must first submit any required outstanding fees, insurance documentations, bonding. They must do that all within a specified period of time, otherwise their franchise is null and void. With regards to determination, city council's determination to approve or deny the franchise per code must be based on the following: whether or not the applicant has received all required licenses, certificates, authorizations, any federal or state requirements, having jurisdictions might require, the capacity of the public right-of-way to accommodate the applicant's proposed facilities, the availability of alternate routes or locations for the proposed facilities, damage or disruption of any public or private facilities, improvements, service, travel, or landscaping if the agreement is granted, public interest in minimizing the cost and disruption of construction in the public right-of-way, the service that the applicant will provide to the community and the region, and the effect of any public, if any, on public health, safety, and welfare to the extent that we're allowed to look at that under applicable federal law, the ability of the applicant to meet all construction and engineering design standard requirements, including mitigation to the city's satisfaction of any future conflicts, restoration, deterioration, maintenance, and warranty, the demonstrated ability and commitment to meet the city's bonding and security requirements, and any other factors that the city determines might demonstrate that the franchise will serve in the community interest. That's kind of a long list, and it should be noted that generally before we bring the franchise to you, city staff is making up all of that to make sure that it's something that staff can recommend approval on before we bring it to you. So, be happy to answer any questions on the process or overall franchise agreements if you have any.
Any questions?
With regards to the specific Tacoma Water franchise, draft ordinance number 6735 is for Tacoma's water pipeline and distribution facilities that are currently in the city's right-of-way. These facilities were previously authorized under ordinance number 2383 in 1969. The facility's general location and alignment is shown on the map on page 62 of 86 of your agenda packet. Water facilities currently serve the City of Auburn and Water District 111 inside the city limits. They do not serve... The proposed agreement would be for a term of 20 years with the option to renew after for an additional five-year term. It's consistent with the city's standard form agreement for these types of facilities. It does require that Tacoma Water obtain construction permits so that they can make repairs, upgrades, improvements to their existing and future facilities. These permits are reviewed and approved and managed through the city's permitting processes. At this time, Tacoma has no plans to expand their facilities or services within Auburn city limits. Tacoma did take their, did take this agreement to their utility board on January 8, and they've received approval to execute the agreement if city council approves the agreement. A public hearing to consider this application, and here, public comment is currently scheduled for February 18. Happy to answer any questions on the agreement.
Thank you. Yes?
I had a general question. How long are these franchise agreements usually, or is there a limit to how long they can apply for one?
It varies depending on the type of utility. This last Tacoma Water one was good for 50 years, we're writing this one for 20 years. I believe current city code allows for five years for telecommunications agreements, so it just depends on the type of utility. We have other ones that are valid for 20 years. We look at the type of utility that it is and the types of regulations that could change, and discuss it with the applicants and land on something that's mutually agreeable.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? Any more questions or comments?
Thank you.
Next up is a presentation for the right-of-way vacation number V1-19.
I'm going to be presenting this one to you as well, so I'd like to give you a brief overview of the process for the right-of-way vacation and what's required of an applicant, and then I'll discuss the actual draft ordinance 6759 with you. So consistent with state law, the city is authorized to process the right-of-way vacations under Chapter 12.48 of the Auburn City Code. Right-of-way vacation is essentially the process by which the city releases its interest in the right-of-way, which then returns to the properties that are entitled to receive it. Right-of-way vacations do not release the city's interest in real property, facilities, or easements. It's specific to right-of-way. Generally, a vacation is proposed because the right-of-way is unopened, not used for intended street or transportation purposes, or it's proposed to facilitate redevelopment of adjacent parcels. Right-of-way vacations can be initiated by either the city or adjacent property owners that have an interest in the right-of-way. The process for both types is essentially the same, with the city-initiated vacation requiring some additional notifications and provisions for adjacent property owners to file objection and potentially prohibit the city from proceeding with a city-initiated vacation. Presentation today will focus on adjacent property owner-initiated vacations. Property owners initiating a vacation must submit a petition in favor of two-thirds of the property owners adjacent to the right-of-way with their application. City staff, along with franchise utilities, other parties that potentially have an interest in the right-of-way, such as PSE or CenturyLink, review the application and determine if the right-of-way could be vacated and if there's any conditions or reasons that should be required. During review, the city may require the applicant to submit additional information, that it could include maps, plans, surveys, legal descriptions, appraisals, and other information that the city determines we need to be able to accurately evaluate the right-of-way. We'll then prepare a staff report upon completion of the review that outlines any conditions recommended in respect to the vacation for the city council's consideration. Conditions could include reservations of easements for affected city utilities as well as utilities such as PSE and CenturyLink or Comcast. And then there could also be access easements or the requirement for compensation for the right-of-way, things like that. Public hearing is then scheduled after the staff report is completed. During the public hearing, city council will hear public comment on the proposed vacation. Council can choose to authorize the vacation by ordinance or deny it, or you can also choose to provide for the conditions recommended in the staff report or modify or change those permissions, depending on what you determine. With regards to compensation, per state statute, the Auburn City and Auburn City Code, the council may require compensation for the full value of the right-of-way if it was acquired at public expense or if the right-of-way has been right-of-way for more than 25 years. Otherwise, council can require one-half of the value of the right-of-way. The value of the right-of-way is generally determined from an appraisal that the applicant is required to submit during the review of the application. If the right-of-way is anticipated to be under $2,000 in value, an appraisal is generally not required because that, the cost of having that appraisal done exceeds the value of the right-of-way, so it doesn't make sense. Past policy from previous city councils has been that if the city acquired the right-of-way through dedication of a plat or other mechanism at no cost to the city, then council has not required compensation as a condition of the vacation. If council authorizes the vacation and required conditions are fulfilled, then the vacation ordinance is recorded with the county and it takes effect. The county determines who the property goes back to and how it splits along parcel lines. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the general process or application.
Any questions about the process for evaluating this?
Where?
Oh, yes.
Where exactly is this? Is this on the corner of B?
I'm going to go over the overview of that, but yes, it's on the corner of, it's between B Street Northeast and Auburn Avenue, just north of Third Street Northeast. So right-of-way vacation, does that make sense? It's shown on page 79 of 86.
Yeah, I'm looking at that, and I was just trying to figure out where that was at. Can I fly by there?
Right-of-way vacation, V1-19, is for a vacation of approximately 1,670 square feet of right-of-way. It's for the portion of the alley north of Third Street between B Street Northeast and Auburn Avenue, shown on 79 of 86 of your agenda packet. This right-of-way vacation was originally dedicated to the City of Auburn for street purposes in 1909 with the plat of Meadow addition to Auburn. It's bordered on the east and west by parcels owned by the applicant who is proposing to incorporate this right-of-way into construction for additional parking for the existing medical building. It's known as the Merritt Building on the corner of B Street Northeast and Third Street. The applicant has indicated that the number of parking stalls currently available for the building is not adequate for the building's uses, so they're hoping to develop, redevelop all those adjacent parcels. The application has been reviewed by city staff and utility mayors that have an interest in the right-of-way, and it's been determined that we could vacate the right-of-way subject to conditions, reservations of access easements for PSE, CenturyLink, and City of Auburn sanitary sewer facilities. Additionally, the city's review of the applicant's proposed development plans would require that the applicant close the Southern Alley access onto Third Street Northeast and any driveway access points that access out onto Auburn Avenue existing properties, and reserve and construct a public access easement from the new southern terminus of the alley out to B Street Northeast. This would allow the properties to the north of the alley vacation to have access out to B Street from that alley. This supports the city's transportation improvement project, number R-16 for regional growth center access improvements, which include intersection improvements at Third Street Northeast and Auburn Avenue, pedestrian and traffic circulation, signal operations, that will all improve access and safety for non-motorized and vehicular access. The site plan that shows those driveways that are proposed to be closed, as well as the access out onto B Street, is shown on page 78 of 86 of your agenda packet. The applicant would be required to complete the access out to B Street and close those driveways within 18 months of the approval of the vacation ordinance. This coincides with the city's design and construction schedule for the city's planned TIP project, the intersection of Third Street and Auburn Avenue. Staff's recommending that compensation for the value of the right-of-way proposed for vacation not be required because it was initially acquired at no cost to the city through dedication for street purposes with the plat of Meadow view addition. And public benefit from this vacation includes decreased right-of-way maintenance obligation for the city, increased property tax revenue as the vacated right-of-way would be incorporated into adjacent parcels, supports the city's transportation improvement project, improves access for safety through those parcels utilizing the existing alley. Public hearing is scheduled before city council on March 16th. I'd be happy to answer any questions on this application.
Council have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next up, we have the item C, which is modifications to 2020 to 2025 transportation improvement.
Good evening.
Yes, we are back again to do another TIP modification. This one is to add three additional projects to the existing TIP and modify two projects that are currently on the TIP. The three projects that are proposed to be added are citywide LED lighting and controls project, which is a project that will replace all of our existing Cobra Head style luminaires with new LEDs and add smart lighting technology to those. That gives us the ability to adjust the light levels and to see what's happening with the individual lights. If the, if the lights fail, they'll let us know rather than having to go out in field verify everything. Federal grant for this project was awarded to the city in 2019. This is the first phase of a larger project to convert all of the streetlights to LED throughout the city. The Cobra Heads were selected as the first phase of this. Subsequent phases will include decorative local streetlights and all the lights you see in downtown, and that'll be accomplished when funding is available. Hopefully, we'll be able to secure more grant funding for that. And I have the project manager for that project with me if you have any specific questions. The second and third projects are also both grant-funded projects. They will complete preservation to some of the bridge decks that we have in the city. The first one is the Lee Hill Bridge across the Green River at the bottom of Lee Hill that will grind and overlay the bridge deck itself to extend the life of the bridge. That was a project that we received federal grant funding for earlier this year, which is why we're adding that to the TIP at this point. The second bridge project is the Third Street Southwest Bridges Deck Preservation. So that's the Great Separation, just south of downtown. There's several bridge decks that make part of that system. And again, the project will preserve the decks of those bridges and extend the service life of that facility. There are three bridges included in that, the Third Street Southwest off-ramp, the Third Street Southwest Bridge over the railroad tracks, the Great Separation, and the Third Street Southwest Bridge over A Street Southwest. And again, that was federal grant funding that was awarded from that same competition that we found out about earlier this year. And again, I have Scott Neder with me. He was, he helped to put the grant applications together and has written the project chart as for those projects that move them forwards. And then the modifications to the two existing projects on the TIP, we have two programs with either annual or biannual funding for bridge deck preservation and bridge structure preservation. To help support the projects that we receive grant funding for, we will be moving the funding in those programs for 2020 and 2021 into those specific grant-funded projects to be able to get all the work done that needs to be done as part of those because the grant funds don't cover everything, and we do need to include local match funds. So you'll see for those two projects, we've zeroed out the funding in those programs for 2020 and 2021 and moved that funding into the new grant-funded projects. So if anybody has any questions about the TIP in general or about those specific projects?
Yes. Deputy Mayor. James, on the TIP for, so explain that again. You show the $100,000 spread out between, annually between 2022 and 2025?
Correct. So, so that's a program that we have $100,000 of funding for on an annual basis. So the current sheet in the TIP shows $100,000 for 2020 and 2021. The modification to that project shows those being zeroed out because we've moved the money from the program into the two new projects. And then the same is also true for P5. That's money that we get every other year. So in the current TIP, that shows $50,000 of funding for 2020, and you'll see in the proposed modification to the TIP, that's been zeroed out, and that money has also been moved into those new specific projects.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Turning the tip. Seeing none, thank you very much. Appreciate it, James and Scott. I'm going to turn it back over to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion items? Any new business? We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Good job.
Thank you.